Okay, good evening. Sorry, we were discussing business. All right, it is our study session tonight and so we're going to discuss the comprehensive plan and zoning code. I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Tammy. Oh, Tammy, turn your mic on. Thank you.
Sorry. Tonight, we are going to have a representative from Johnson and Associates. They are going to be talking about the comprehensive plan as well as the new zoning codes that they are working on.
Yeah, thank you. My clicker here.
Hi.
Hi.
We have the presentation.
Great.
Let me make sure. All right. Kelly Driscoll, I'm an urban planner at Johnson and Associates. We're a engineering and planning firm in Oklahoma City. And today, we're just going to do a brief overview of the comprehensive plan that should look familiar to you all that was adopted in October. And then we'll go over your existing development codes and then the code project that we are working on. So, there's a few documents that deal with land development and they have kind of different legal standings. The comprehensive plan is a long-range policy document. It's meant to guide decisions by bodies such as yourself and Planning Commission. Your zoning regulations are law, so they are regulations. Those outline the uses that can happen within certain zoning districts, as well as maybe building form and how far back it is from the street, things like that. And then, of course, your subdivision regulations, pretty self-explanatory, regulates how you divide and plat your land. It also has some provisions in there for public improvements, what those standards are. So again, you all adopted this in October. Robbie is here from Team. We worked on this with them and ADG. And of course, Council and Planning Commission, as well as various stakeholders in the public, were involved. And so, there's a few reasons why cities do comprehensive plans. One is our state statutes outline that a city's ordinances and land use decisions should be consistent with your comprehensive plan. But also, you want to plan for growth. Yukon had not done a new comprehensive plan in a number of years. And so, if you don't plan for that growth, you kind of get in this cycle of catch-up on maintenance and keeping up with roads and utilities and things like that. And then, of course, there's also the philosophical basis. You want to get your input from your residents and people that live and work here. What do they want to see for Yukon in the future? So, all of that goes into a comprehensive plan. Now, each chapter in the plan outlined issues and then, of course, the policies. To address those issues, these are just a kind of a highlight for tonight. The population trends for Yukon are really in line with what we see for Oklahoma as a whole and the United States. Your major employers tend to be more service-oriented and retail, commercial-type uses. And along those lines, a large amount of your population is leaving Yukon for work. Not a lot of people live and work here. And as you all know, municipalities in Oklahoma need sales tax dollars. And when people are working in other municipalities, they might, you know, spend money there on their way home so you don't get those sales tax dollars contributing to the municipal budget. And then, as far as your housing stock, the majority of it is single-family detached. There's not a lot of what's called kind of the missing middle housing, different types, townhomes, condos, duplexes, things like that. And then, what apartments you do have tend to be a little bit older and there might be some maintenance issues with what is there. Your developable area in Yukon, while the city is pretty large, is limited by that large floodplain you have for the Canadian River. I'll go into that a little bit more here in a minute. So, another reason why it's important to plan is for growth. And Canadian County, this is kind of an older image here, but showing that extrusion of how much growth Canadian County has seen in comparison to other counties in Oklahoma. And you all may have heard Oklahoma City touting their numbers in the new 2020 census. And while we don't have Yukon-specific numbers yet, I was able to get Canadian County. And since 2010, the county has seen thirty-four percent growth. And we don't expect, like on this chart here, you see that Yukon's percentage of the county is about twenty percent. We don't think that's going to change too much from that table there to 2020 numbers. So...
Could I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you, so, it's kind of a typical question when we talk about Yukon and population in these terms. Is that twenty percent representative of our zip code or our, or our city limits?
City limits, yeah, yeah, yep. So, developable area, this map shows kind of the hatched area is the floodway of the Canadian River. The blue area is your hundred-year floodplain and the orange is the five-hundred-year floodplain. And so, this really limits the intensity of development that can happen in those areas. And when you take that out, there's only about fifteen percent land area left in Yukon. So, the meat of the plan and what's used a lot by Planning Commission and City Council is what's called the future land use map. And this gives kind of broad designations for land uses within the city. So, you'll see there's a large blue area, again, that's that floodplain, this designated open space. And that doesn't necessarily mean that no development can happen there. There can be lower intensity, larger agricultural and residential developments there. And then, the green area is that agricultural use. When you take those two out, the next largest component is that low intensity. And that tends to be your already-developed single-family subdivisions and maybe some smaller-scale retail or office uses within the city. And I won't go into all of the designations, but I've just highlighted a couple here for you. The employment land, again, driving that need to have people be in Yukon, working and living. The purple areas are areas that are well-served by your existing transportation and rail and could accommodate kind of some of those light industrial or office park uses to keep people in Yukon and working here. There's not any density outlined for this designation. Some of the other ones do have that. And then, the urban intensity is, the only place it's applied is really your downtown because that is so unique. The development pattern is just so different from the other areas of Yukon. There's a need to preserve that character and, you know, have it just different, different standards for that. So, it allows a little bit more intense density for commercial and residential in that area than you might see in that yellow area, for instance, on the map. So, moving along to zoning, this is your zoning map, looks a lot like your land use map. There's a lot of green there up by the river. Yukon's zoning code is adopted as an appendix to your municipal code. It's got your base zoning districts with those permitted uses and bulk standards in there. And then, you've got PUDs to address performance impacts to maybe surrounding properties or the community as a whole. There are nine articles within it. And while it does cover a lot, it does not cover everything that deals with land development in Yukon. For instance, landscaping standards are in a different chapter, building standards, yet another chapter, signs, another chapter. So, for folks who are looking to do development in Yukon, it might be a little confusing. And then, for staff administering things, it's just a little bit more complicated to have stuff spread out. And I will say, this is not unique to Yukon. It happens over time, you know, when you have an older code and it gets amended and things just get a little bit more separated out. And then, the subdivision regulations is also an appendix, it's Appendix B, sets those standards for your streets, your right-of-way widths, easements, lots and blocks, and of course, the procedures for dividing and plating of land. There's six articles in your subregs and interestingly, one appendix to the appendix, and it's also Appendix B. Just a little bit of funny nomenclature there. The code project is really looking at all of these regulations that deal with land development within Yukon. So, zoning, subdivision, your sign chapter, landscaping, building codes, specifically those architectural standards for commercial properties. And what we're hoping to do is develop a hybrid zoning code. So, that can really take elements from conventional zoning, which is what Yukon's code is now, and fold in some of those performance standards that you might see in planned unit developments or really deal with impacts to surrounding properties better. But one of the really important things is the addition of graphical representation. For people who don't read codes every day, it can be a little challenging to understand them. And so, what this code will include is some illustrations to help people, oh, okay, that's where my building can go or the parking needs to be situated here, things like that. So, it'll be easier to understand. We're seeing the, we will likely have a final draft ready for adoption in early next year. We've got five phases here. And then, we've done a little bit of, we've done review of your existing codes and found some initial findings. I won't read these off for you, but... And again, this is not unique to Yukon. Many municipalities, when you have code that's been amended over time, you get some duplicative terminology or if it hasn't been updated for a long time, you know, you might have uses in there that just don't exist anymore, like telegraph stations and things like that that you just don't need. So, we'll look at all those, consolidate them, get rid of the ones that you don't need. We've also found you guys have a lot of conditional uses. And we're going to try and get a handle on that and figure out what really needs to be conditional and what might be a better way to approach some of those. And our initial recommendations are to form an advisory board, consolidate everything into one place that deals with development in Yukon. So, and that's usually called a Unified Development Code or UDC. Again, consolidate and clarify all of your uses. There's hundreds of them. And clarify your processes and administration. Right now, that's kind of split around in various portions of the code, so it would all be in one section, so it's really easy to understand. And align your code with some changes in land use case law and state statutes that have happened and then with the comprehensive plan where that makes sense. Also, your PUDs right now are done as an overlay, so you guys have to take two actions on one piece of property to rezone it. So, we're going to investigate whether it makes sense to make that a base district itself so it's just not as confusing for folks going through the process and administering. And then, one thing we've heard from staff and others is the need for a, what's called a simplified planning, planned unit development district. And that would be basically a PUD, but for smaller projects that are less than five acres. So, maybe that infill development that needs a little bit special treatment. So, we'll look at that as well. And then, also, update your street, sidewalk and public improvement standards that are found within your subregs. So far, we kicked off in June. We have formed the advisory board. We introduced the project, just like I'm here today, we went to July study session with Planning Commission. We did that in-depth review of your existing regulations. One thing that staff has asked us to do is look at all of your fees and how they align with other municipalities in the area. So, we're working on that right now. We're also working on a draft outline of the UDC and that will provide that shell for us to draft. And then, also, finalizing, we're working on finalizing that meeting schedule. When we met with Planning Commission in July, there were a number of things that they brought up. I won't read everything here for you, but they really voiced concern that Main Street and I-40 needs some special attention. They love what Edmund has done in their downtown area as far as spurring redevelopment and what that end product looks like. Obviously, as you all know, you require plating. And so, you guys end up with a replat of a replat of a replat. And they expressed some consternation over that and keeping up with just where exactly that is. So, we'll look at that. One issue that came up at the very end, which there was really not a consensus on it, was Airbnb and whether that's a use that makes sense for Yukon.
Do we not allow Airbnbs?
No.
The setup of our current zoning does not allow that use. So, that is something that we've been asked to do or consider. So, that's why she's asking the council. Is that something you want to consider? But if it is, then there's special requirements of parking and stuff that we'd have to address through this process. But I think that's what she's really asking. Yeah. Well, our ordinance is so old, the uses are very specific.
Yeah, Airbnb's just really picked up lately.
Because to actually be a rental place like that, that's by the night, it actually becomes an R3 property, which becomes an apartment-type deal or a transition.
Which really isn't the same.
No, no.
No. Okay. Yeah, that just surprised me. Thanks.
Yeah. So, as far as next steps, just like I'm here tonight, we're going to Board of Adjustments' next scheduled meeting, which I believe is in October, to introduce the project to them. We're going to work on drafting sections of the code. We've outlined some targeted outreach for those people that really are heavy users of the code, so engineers, developers, sign professionals. So, we'll be having some meetings with them. Of course, the meetings with the advisory board and Planning Commission. And then, we plan to be back before you in December with some sections for you to review. We aren't going to give you everything all at once, so it'll be a little bit more sizable and digestible. You'll get that well in advance of your meeting, so you can review those. And then, of course, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now. But this is also some contact information for myself and Mark Zitzow in our office and of course Robbie and Mitchell, which you all know, of course, too, so.
So, who's on the advisory board?
That is, let's see, Community Development, City Manager's Office, help me, Mitchell.
The advisory board is set up with me, Kathy, that's in our department. We do have Jason Beal in it as well. We do have Johnson Associates. They actually have three planners, which Kelly's one of them. They're actually showing up. We're pulling in the Planning Commission on quarterly meetings to be part of that. So, we'll get the hard work done and give it to them. We talked about bringing it to you quarterly, but we figured with the way we have to present it and stuff would be a little cumbersome to have quarterly meetings with you. But that's why she was talking about, we'll send pieces to you and we hope that you give us your input.
Right, okay.
We are going to get, you know, input from developers and sign contractors and anybody that would be using it or has land that would be impacted by what we do. So, any of the landholders that still has land to develop, we're going to try to include them, if they want to be included. Because to make it work, we have to have everybody's input anyway.
What were you going to ask, Rick?
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about this comprehensive. How often do we do these things? Because I see there's a disconnect a lot of times between the Planning Commission that we have and the comprehensive plan. In the last, say, six months, I think we've had some discourse here. And I'm trying to figure out, is it the comprehensive plan that's wrong or is it our constituents' wrong?
I've been told that every piece of land that's left to develop is going to be hard to develop because they don't want it in their backyard. Is typically what happens. I think Kelly, with her experience, she can tell you about all the problems that she's been through over the years. But the last pieces of land anywhere in the state of Oklahoma or anywhere seems to be, nobody wants it. It's going to be too much traffic. It's going to be a big impact on the water and sewer. You know, they just don't want those people because they don't have the same type of house I have. I mean, it goes on and on for all kinds of excuses. Or I bought because it was a field.
Well, this makes it a real difficult situation for a councilman because I'm supposed to be representing X number of people. And hey, if they don't like it, they may have to live with it because if it helps the entire city, we're going to have to bend.
Well, the staff tries to present it to you, meeting the ordinance or the code requirements.
Right.
It's the Planning Commission's determination to make sure we applied it correctly or if they feel it's appropriate, as well as you have the final say with the recommendations. It's been, you know, the advisory board or the Planning Commission or City Council is the ones that makes that final decision. Is that something that we want? Is that something that's going to improve quality of life? And that's the thing that staff looks at and tries to present to you. We try to look at those future uses, you know, but sometimes, like I said, people just don't want it in their backyard.
All right. Thank you.
But there's a lot of things that are playing into.
Well, yeah, well, that's just back.
Supportable housing and stuff.
Back in the fifties and sixties, they didn't want to grow. So, that's why all the land was given to Oklahoma City. So, now, now, you know, we want to grow or not grow. Maybe we don't want to grow. I don't know how the people feel about wanting to grow, but apparently, they all want to move here.
Yeah. And I mean, through the comp plan process, you know, we did that public survey and people really wanted to see some beautification of your existing arterial corridors and maybe some increased landscaping standards. So, that's some of those things that, as far as aligning with the comp plan, those will get taken out and worked into the new code. And again, the comp plan is a guide. I was a planner in Oklahoma City for a number of years and they have a quote-unquote "new" comp plan. It was adopted in 2015. And it has a lot of things that are contrary to their existing regulations. And so, they're in this kind of in-between period. They're in the process of updating their code. And it is difficult. I kind of describe it as purgatory. You know, you're stuck and you're pulled in all these directions. But ultimately, the comp plan is that guide for you guys, the decision-makers, to frame each individual land use decision. And it is a guide for you, just information.
Right. Nobody wants it in their backyard, but everybody wants us to beautify. And the only way we can do that is if we increase our tax base.
Exactly.
And so, it's a very hard decision.
It is, it is.
Anybody else have some questions?
Nope, okay.
Do you have any more?
No, that was it.
That's it?
That's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Right, thank you so much. That was very interesting. All right. Who do you have next?
Madam Mayor, we would like to talk about some drainage ditches. I've asked Mitchell to give a presentation this evening. I would like to give a little bit of an intro. In this past year, we have had an unusual amount of rain that has happened. This has caused an amount of erosion that has surpassed what we've had in the past. We've had projects, drainage ditches that have been okay. But with all of this rain that we received, we've had some flooding. And some of the erosion has really, as you will see on some of these pictures, has just been astronomical. There are some things that we priced a year ago that aren't even close to what it's going to cost us today. So, I'm going to let Mitchell give you the presentation on the drainage ditches that we have that are on our priority list.
This is one of the projects that we're talking about. We call this Yukon Avenue Kimball Park. Basically, you can see what it looks like at that time. That's actually a little over a year ago. And it had some washing and stuff. We did have a cost at that time to do what needed to be done. This is where it has come apart since we had the large rains. One of the things that, you know, we have a big concern about, we have neighbors that are coming to us, like on this one, that is eroding their property away. So, we're bringing it to you for your consideration as well as we're working with the engineers. And there's certain things we'll have to do. And if we have questions in reference to some of the issues, we have Robbie here as well to discuss it. As you know, that Kimball Park lays within a floodplain. It has a floodway in a floodplain. Large amounts of waters during rain events tend to flood the streets there as well, a lot of it. We are looking at trying to move the water a little better through that. But we also got to remember that what we're doing is not going to take care of all the issues. And we want you to understand that because the water and the intensities we're having the last five years, six years, eight years are different than what we used to have fifteen or twenty years. The intensities are more, we're getting more water at one time, you know, it's like the bottom of the bucket drops out completely. What we're proposing to do, if I can do this, see if this will work, this right here, this dark area here, that is one of the proposed projects that we're proposing. It's actually two projects we're putting into one. Like we were saying, you know, this is what it looks like today. This is what it looked like a year and a half ago or so. So, we're trying to be on top of these projects as quick as we can and try to address them. This project here, with both projects together, tied together, which was being recommended by the city engineer as well as as meeting and discussing it with the property owners. Basically, that's a $112,000 project. And that's a quote we got from our on-call contractor working with the city engineer. We'll talk a little bit more about what we're required to do because we've got several of these projects, but there is some certain permitting we have to do, certain engineering we'll have to do to do some of this. So, this is Kingsgate Road. It's West Port West. This is an area that you can't really see. It's overgrown. It's scouring. It's getting close to a sewer line that we have there. As you can see, you can't really tell. It's something you actually physically have to go out and look at. We've been looking at this since, I think it was 2013. It's got bigger. It's actually, you see this fence here hanging? There was actually a fence that attached to that going to the south and you could actually walk behind it a couple of years ago. But this last year and a half, it's washed that out and it's hanging in the air. It doesn't show that. Like I said, it's one of those areas you have to actually physically go look at. We had an estimate, I think about thirty-seven thousand a year ago. But the last rain event we had, you can see the washing, which you can't really tell it, but it's a wide ditch now compared to when it was just, I think, twelve, fifteen feet wide when we originally started, don't you think, Arnold? It's deeper, it's wider. You can kind of see here, you can't really tell. There's a better picture of that fence and you can see the trees that are washing out. They're falling into the drainage area and they're scouring, so the ditch is getting wider when these trees are falling off into it. It's deeper than we can handle. You know, we looked at trying to do it ourselves, but it's going to take some heavy equipment. And we did get with our engineer and we did talk to our on-call contractor. This as well, as you can see, this is the area here that we're talking about. It is a floodplain, floodway. We're getting a lot of water. This pond kind of acts as a detention pond, this green area. We do have detention ponds up out of this subdivision, up the hill from it, trying to slow the water down. But it's just an area that takes a lot of water. The dark area, as you can see, that's the proposed area that we think we need to address. One of the other things we have, there's a sewer line that runs along here. We're afraid that it's going to scour enough that the sewer line's going to roll off into the ditch. It's getting close. It's real close to one of the manholes. And we have done some work here, drainage work up the street and stuff, trying to take care of the property owners. This project's a hundred and four... Uh, this project's a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars now. Almost a, a hundred and forty-three in a year ago, it was forty-seven thousand. But there's that, that much rain this spring that did have effect on it. Uh, Bass Bridge, what we call Bass Bridge, this is one that you approved the other day. Uh, that was an area, you can see the retaining wall that was falling. What we're trying to do is follow the places that have the worst areas that need to be addressed, that has the potential impact of damaging people's houses. Uh, that's the before picture. Uh, they are working on it now. Uh, you can see what it's looking like. On the left is where they dug it up. Uh, on the left, they poured the concrete bottom. So we are trying to address what we can with the money that we're allowed, and that was a twenty-five thousand dollar project. This is Yukon Avenue. This picture here, this is looking to the, uh, south off Yukon Avenue Bridge. This is looking back from the south to the north at the bridge. You can see we're having some scouring here, as well as here. Uh, this is looking basically from the, the north, looking back to the south. You can see all this in here, and this is the same thing here. It's kind of a little overgrown, so we're looking at doing something with this project. Actually, uh, Team Design is actually working on, uh, doing the modeling that we're required to do for the 404 core permit that we're required to have and obtain, which deals with, we're working on drainage. When we take a channel like that, we're actually have to have special permitting and stuff from the federal government before we can go in there and do a lot of that work. So, uh, like I said, we're looking at all the issues. We're trying to address them. It's kind of one of those things we've kind of got. Rain events, it's causing us issues. Uh, I know jumping on them quicker probably would help us. But what we brought to you tonight with these two projects that we have, not counting Yukon Avenue Bridge project, we're at two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for those that we call the, uh, you know, the Kimball Park and the Kingsgate. Like I said, it's just, just these rain events causes the problems. Like I said, we're trying to do the best we can. Like I said, we're not gonna solve everybody's problems. We wish we could, you know, water's kind of uncontrolled. Uh, I do, like I said, Robbie's here. He can discuss it a little bit more and talk about water and how we handle it, but it's in a floodplain, and it's pretty well determined at one time or another you're gonna get flooded.
And the longer we put it off, the worse it's gonna get, and the more money it's gonna cost.
That's why we was kind of showing you these two projects. Now, one of the things that a lot of people don't realize, you know, right now, that we know of, with just in a quick count, we have sixteen point three miles of urbanized area that's not in concrete. It's, uh, it's raw land. It's like they like it. They like those green buffers. Uh, that's one of the things they're trying to push us towards, instead of these concrete channels. Repairing areas is what they call them. And then of the improved concrete line channels, we have about two miles, so.
I had a question, Mitch. Some of the, one of those pictures you showed, were those houses in a floodplain that we built?
A lot of the houses over there, the floodplain map come in, I think, nineteen seventy-nine. The houses are pre-firm. They were built prior to the floodplain maps determining them to be in that. Anything that was built after that is what we call one-foot freeboard. But at the same time, sometimes those maps change. So in our ordinance, and then we've had for twenty-some years, we have what we call two-foot freeboards. So actually, that house is built two foot out of the base flood elevation. So to take in consideration those rain events or those possibilities of that map changing, because the map changes, and they're getting, they're changing to a product, I think it's called Risk Map, and there's actually maybe another map that's coming out. So you, it puts you in a risk and a rating of that. But a lot of the houses are pre-firm.
Alright, thank you.
So we need to do it, but where do we get the money?
Well, that's where we're coming to you. I think we would have to do a budget amendment to take it and change that. That's probably what we recommend to you, uh, tonight.
Do we have the money to?
We're gonna have to take it out of capital, out of sales tax capital. Um, we will be coming to you at the next agenda, the next meeting, and bringing those forward for your, pending your approval.
But again, as is, at least we have money to.
Yeah, and those costs don't include the cost of permitting or the engineering that we have to have and the modeling, so those costs, we'll make sure include those engineering fees that we'd have. We don't anticipate any of the federal monies either from the last allocation or the new infrastructure that's fallen under any of that.
Yes, sir.
Where, do we have other areas that are today looking like these projects looked a year or two ago? We are doing our best to address all the issues. A lot of people want, they'll say, I want my ditch line, but there's a lot of issues that come into that. It might be better for Robbie to address that, or maybe Joe Davis, because when you start concrete, and that causes other problems, because the water gets there quicker and so forth. Uh, like I said, I think the areas that we're addressing is trying to protect our infrastructure and try to protect some people's property, you know. They're gonna get water in their yard, and that's one of the things we hear a lot about. I've got water in my yards, so I'm flooding. The whole key is to keep the water out of their house if we can, and try to keep it out of the garage. You know, sometimes we got a couple of places that we have issues on large rain events. Uh, we're trying to remove fences out of drainage easements. Sometimes that becomes a problem, because they don't want people walking behind their house. But a drainage easement's open for a reason. You know, you got the water going underneath it, as well as through a channel for secondary overflow.
Um, uh, I try not to get too far off topic. I think it, it's in line, is, um, what is our interest, our restrictions to, to address the Highway Four drainage on the west side of, I'm sorry, on the east side of the highway? Because there are, there is, you know, we're invested in the, in the new road, uh, but there's also citizens along that, along that drainage, too, and I'm not sure what, what our obligation is, what our, you know, how much can we do or not do? I mean, is that some, I don't mean to just throw your ball out of right field, that, just on top. I mean, it's connected to all the same, all the, all the places that we looked at drained to there, so I'm curious.
But that was designated as a floodplain.
That is a, that's in the floodplain. Uh, of course, the tributary that carries that water is a floodway. The problem with that is we're talking about an extreme amount of money to, for permitting, basically, as well as trying to remove that much material. Because there's a lot of material there that would have to be removed. We're restricted by ODOT about the width of that drainage easement. Uh, ODOT doesn't want to address that. But like I said, I, you know, Joe probably could talk a little bit more about that. Because I have not been involved with ODOT in their discussions of that channel, or past history of that channel, but I know keeping it maintained and mowed is one of the things, but with the rain events we've had, you've noticed it's scoured. It's kind of hard to get on the east side of it now to maintain it like we used to.
Right.
Well, the, um, the work over at, um, um, Kimball Park, would, would that, um, help the drainage over behind those homes on Kingston Drive by Spencer Farms?
As, as we talked about, well, you've seen the map. They're gonna flood one time or another, unfortunately. The whole idea is try to get that water in there as fast as you can and out of there as fast as you can. But we can't guarantee them they won't ever flood, because they're in the map. The federal government's determined it's a, a potential. Uh, you have a one percent chance of every year flooding, if not more. And it's hundred-year rain events and five-hundred-year rain events. We're having more and more of them all the time, so.
And the prices that we've been given for these projects, depending on the length of time it takes for us to complete them, are those prices guaranteed?
The prices for the, uh, from the on-call contractor are good. The fees that we don't know about is the engineering, the surveying, what's gonna be required by the courts for the 404 permits. Those costs, we don't know yet. And then we're working on getting those costs together, because there's certain things they have to submit to be able to change a for, uh, it, basically, it's waters of the state. They call it the blue line. The state has determined what waters are. A lot of our tributaries that carry water are waters of the state, so it's a 404. So it requires a permit from the court to do that. So those costs and what they require of us, sometimes are uncontrolled, but we work well with team, and we'll make sure we try to control our cost. But there's certain things we have to do.
Right. So this is just the bare minimum?
That's for actual work. We're not talking about what we have to do for permitting and obtaining the permit and the cost of the permit. And of course, we're dealing with a floodplain, the floodway, and the engineering they have to do, they have to model it, so there's a lot of things that go in.
But again, the longer we leave it, the worse it's gonna get, and the more it's gonna cost us. Any other questions? Do you have anything else for us? Is that enough?
That's enough tonight, I think.
Yes.
We got more things on the agenda, but that's enough for tonight.
Okay. Alright, do you have anything else?
No, ma'am.
Alright, we're going to adjourn and be back here at seven o'clock.